To reply, the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for consent? I actually would like to amend the agenda to include two topics that were not added to the agenda and had made the cutoff timeline to be included agenda.
The information will be included in the business items of the assessments.
They're not necessarily part of the assessment agenda. I'd like to include the two items that were requested on the December 7th, which was the due date of those two topics to be included, the first of which was from Steve Winter. He requested I would like to discuss this at the next select board meeting.
It is not on the agenda.
And why is that, Madeline?
Because I exercise my authority as the Chair of the Board, and the information will be dealt with as we go along in the agenda.
So Madeline, you only have one-third the authority at sitting at this table. One-third. I'm not done. And Kathy and I make up the other two-thirds, and you are not the sole decision-maker on what goes on the agenda. We all contribute to that. We have set guidelines on when people submit their request, and we met those guidelines, and you've denied two of our constituents the opportunity to be included in the agenda. I move that they be included in the agenda.
Wouldn't it make more sense for all of the board members to discuss whether or not the item should be included on the agenda next time?
Well, we weren't even given that opportunity this time. The one person said they're not on the agenda, and to be frankly honest, this reads that Madeline and you set the agenda, and you're Town Administrator, not a Town Manager, so we set the agenda.
It has nothing to do with it, Suzanne. What I'm suggesting is that the agenda items came in from members of the community. That's great. That's fine, but one person shouldn't decide whether or not those items are on the agenda. The full board can decide to put them on the agenda for the 21st.
So if we know, actually, that's inappropriate, because if we look at the document you shared with me, I highlighted elements that say specifically on maybe the page number, because they had to be on a set timeframe. I should be included. I printed one out from home, but it wasn't included in the information.
No, I sent it out, Kathy, but I did not send it printed. It wasn't. It's a procedure.
Well, it says that all meetings and workshops shall be open to the public, and then it says, "And the public shall have the opportunity to be heard." That's at the last sentence on the first page and the beginning of the first sentence on the second page. We've denied our residents the opportunity to speak at this meeting, and they've met the required deadline of timeframe that you stipulated is necessary to do that. Therefore, I think they should be put on the agenda.
What that's talking about, Suzanne, is public comment. They're giving the right favor of the comment.
They asked to be on the agenda.
That does not say agenda. It says they have the right to speak.
Okay, and Mr. Winter put a request in on December 7th as one of our town members, requesting it to be added to the agenda. And every time that somebody's not on the agenda, Madeline says, "We can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda." So how are these people allowed to speak?
The way I suggested. I mean, does anybody else understand what I'm trying to say?
No.
If we have a policy, let's stick to it. I'm just saying.
The policy says if you...
I have it here.
Yes, and it says, "In order to facilitate the meeting, the Chair can decide, can set the agenda." And I would like to have other people, not just one person.
I submitted to everyone to view. No one, when I sent the email to everyone to include it as an agenda item, no one said they disagreed with that topic.
You did not send that email to my attention.
You were copying that on it.
I was not copying on that.
See, I happen to have the email. Let's see if you're copying on it.
There's a motion, Lady, of...
I have from...
There's a motion.
Was there a second?
So what is our policy? And how do the people get on the agenda? Because it seems like it's this, then it's that, then it's this, because when I was Chairman, I never was even asked what was going to be on the agenda once.
Well, according to the policy, you weren't supposed to come in and set what the board of the agenda...
It does not say that. It actually doesn't say that. And I'd like to share, I have copies that I'm going to see here, so it says, on December 7th, I've highlighted, it says, "To Madeline Hennessy," you received a copy, Kathy DeValley, you received a copy, and Town Administrator, you received a copy from Steve Winter.
From Steve Winter, yes. You said you sent an email.
I did send an email.
I didn't see that one.
You were copying that as well. But that's... I sure do, and I've got it highlighted. We've got Town Administrator, Kathy DeValley, and Madeline Hennessy. Christine, how is the agenda that's been posted publicly and not sent to the select board prior posting? And why are the amendments back at the end and without answering the previously requested? And why are my agenda items not listed?
Yeah, which agenda items? When did you tell me to put those agenda items on?
Okay, well, I can go. I have that here, too. Give me one moment. I printed them all out. All the three equally, this is on December 7th, which is also required for that. All of the three equally weighted votes for the meeting agenda, I approved these items to be included. And these were from one agenda. On the agenda.
Did you send it?
I said that I approved the items to be included on the agenda, so in theory, I did reply to her email.
I never saw an email from you.
So you still didn't, so even if you didn't see mine, he had a request.
I don't respond to the residents. I don't take, I don't take direction from the residents.
How do they get on the agenda, then? If they send it to the town and request to be on the agenda, how do they get on the agenda?
I... When the request is made known, whether or not it goes on the agenda at the time, we have enough to deal with with the applications of a meeting. And also, excuse me.
No, I'm a board, but I asked you for a return phone call. I never got it, just for the record.
And that is because I will not make ex parte comments in the middle.
It is not ex parte to discuss with your taxpayer, and you may use the gall, but I will be quiet. There are three elected officials at the table.
And only one.
So it says on page two, "The Town Administrator is accountable to collect members of the select board as one, a majority of the select board as prior, to direct the Town Administrator." So when we give you our information, we ask for that to be on the agenda. That is a direction from the select.
I did not receive it in an email from you to put those items on the agenda.
You received one from our residents.
I did from the resident. I did receive it from you. You're saying that you sent an email, that you responded to that email. I did not see that.
I have them all here.
It was your motion.
I move that we include the two residents' requests to be added to the agendas since they've been overlooked in this last agenda creation.
I'll second that motion. Is there a count and further discussion?
No, I think that's my point of thoughts.
All in favor? Close? We'll do that then after the refund policy. Which one did you intend to discuss first?
Mr. Winter, would you like to go first? Or the first one?
No, that will be item number five.
She's asking the order for items after the permit fee. It doesn't matter to me where they go as long as they're on the agenda.
We're only part of assessors' items, so they should go over to that.
On the business.
They're not. They're not part of assessors' items.
They're involving, okay. Either way, this is my...
So which one would you like to have taken up?
How about we have Mr. Winter go first, and then Ms. Wilson Hennessy go next? Now, actually, I'll ask you both, would you like to go at this meeting since you weren't offered to be part of it? Or would you rather take it to another meeting?
Fine, meet here.
To do it tonight?
Because I've already informed the Town Administrator. I will not be here on the 21st because she's very worried.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are convenient to you since we deny included in the agenda.
Thank you.
Of course.
Are we set to approve the agenda with these amendments?
I move that we move forward with the two additions.
Second? All in favor? The upcoming select board meeting is next week, Thursday, December 21st, at 5:30 at the Town Hall. This is item number one, the Casella Waste Contract Renewal. Other any comments?
We move here. So the only change is the redline item?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, redlines are what we adjusted. Some of them, some of the stuff in there, we didn't change, like the, you know, taking on the town dumpsters for free. That was already in there from what you guys had sent us, so we didn't redline that. It's a change to the contract, but it's not a change to what was presented to us. The only thing is redline your changes to what was sent to us.
I appreciate you adding the second community update.
Yes.
I just think it's great to collaborate with what we do for the rest of the cleanup for that.
Can I have a comment on the vehicle access hours?
What data?
I don't know. It's got a yellow on the side. What about the form?
Yes, I don't remember the papers I remember.
Access by non-commercial vehicles is that what you're...
Yep, okay.
The access by non-commercial vehicles unrestricted?
So what we were trying, the intention behind that was just to make it, you know, clarify that it's for the commercial loud trucks, and our employees are, have, don't count towards the two vehicles that are allowed to leave or enter before the 6:00 AM. So what we're saying, the intention is to say that our employees showing up to work don't count towards the two trucks that are allowed to leave.
Personal vehicle. You can't actually leave anywhere.
Which I don't think has been an issue in their quieter vehicles.
So it doesn't mean that if I wanted my trash at 4:00 in the morning, I can come up and...
That would not be permitted.
So how about we put a bracket there that says employee access?
Yeah, we could change it.
Just so that it's not confusing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could definitely, that, exactly. That's what our intention was for our...
A bracket, just so there's no confusion down the road when we're not here anymore.
Yeah.
I think it looks great.
We adjusted the fees to $2.50. I did a rough math. That probably represents around an additional $45,000 a year is coming back to the town in fees. It's an additional base, you know, north of $100,000 total in the host community fees.
Sounds even better.
And the 80 cents for the recyclables is correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So can we have a motion?
And one quick question. So you said it was a potential upside of about $45,000. You were saying ballpark.
Yeah, yeah, ballpark, 45. We do about $55,000 tons a year. It's going from 165 to 250. Recycling is a much smaller impact because it doesn't weigh as much. So it's really the trash and the demolition that create the impacts. So yeah, right around $45,000.
Total across the $100,000 a year.
Yep.
All right, just want to clarify that. Perfect. Sounds great. I move that we accept the contract as presented.
Second? Can we approve the discussion? All in favor?
Great partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get the redline stuff changed permanently and get it off to you for...
Yeah, do that one amendment to start it. It's for employee access and...
Yep.
And then...
I don't know if this is appropriate timing right now. I know that we have quite a few people here in the public. Would you just like to talk about your recent inspection?
Yeah, actually, I was buying a sandwich from the store, going to Kathy, and she's like, "How was your day going?" And I said, "It's going great." You know, DEP had just called me, you know, yesterday morning saying, "Hey, we'll be at your site for environmental inspection in an hour." Said, "Great. Great. Good to see you." So went off without a hitch. She actually made a comment that it's one of the more well-kept transfer stations she's seen throughout the Southern Africa State. So expect to get a report finalized from her tomorrow, but without a hitch. So let me share that with you.
Hi, it's...
The only last comment, and I apologize. I just want to make sure because we talked about it last time. We did not include a hazardous waste day in this. You know, we didn't have... We started looking into it. And really, the best way hazardous waste with hazardous waste days work are when communities come together because it's just more, it's harder to do it for a smaller community. So we're not closing the book on it, and if we want further discussion, we need to make an addendum later. But we didn't include it in this contract.
I assume we should try and coordinate the timing, not the same day. We have hazardous waste on this day. This week, and the next week to do it. But, you know, try and get them ahead.
Yes.
Go with that.
The next item on the agenda is the second of the communications. Tell them these. Thank you, guys.
So there's three documents in your packet that the County Administrator sent over last week. It's the lease agreement between the Town of West Bath and San Diego County. And then there are two, what do they call them? Memorandums to the solar lease agreement, which describes the property and allows space for the fall zone for the tower. These are not complete yet. The County Administrator thought that the conversations had already happened between their attorney and the town's attorney. When I contacted Salvy, she said, "No, they haven't reviewed it yet." And she gave it to Mark Fowler to review. So he is in the process of reviewing all three agreements right now. The county commissioners have signed the lease already.
So they have resolved the issue of the overlapping fees?
Yes. Walden and County Communications have been working very well together with the Attorney Burns Senior, and I think that everything has been resolved.
When are they expecting to start the entryway off of the highway?
I don't have that information. I think they're waiting for everything to be signed, and then we can talk about those items.
Do we need...
Is there any action to...
There's no action tonight. I just wanted to make sure that you had them so that you can review them. Mark thought he would be able to get back to us early next week with the results of his review, and we can go from there. I also should mention that in Section 4 of the lease agreement, where it calls for a payment, in the original version that they sent over...
Then on page 3, rent?
Yes. At first, they included a section on rent, but what we had talked about in the past, there wasn't going to be a rental fee because of the county. So the commissioners approved a lump sum payment to the town of $20,000 for your acceptance. So I'll be thinking about that, too, and whether or not you feel that's appropriate.
And that means that we forego their sales on the communication power? Do they keep that revenue then?
If they're going to do that, if they're going to lease it out, I suppose that's what it would be.
Because it may be true for us to take a look at a lower payment and a shared revenue stream on the... I'd look see where attorneys think about that, who wrote the... Because I think that, because that was in the agreement. They were already looking at putting Brentwood High School on it and some other elements that can create significant rental fee.
I'll mention it to Mark. I'll mention it to Mark and see what he says.
Because what's the best alternative for the town? David?
Just a comment. There are still some places in the town that receive very poor radio communications for our own fire department. So I think it's a must if this is done. It's not only us, it benefits the county and our neighboring towns with better radio reception for the community. So I don't want to hide up on us trying to make a few bucks off the county, which we have to pay the taxes to do that. I think this should be rushed through a task again so this tower can be built.
Thank you for your comment. I'd be curious to see what we hear back on the other opportunity.
This is item number three, the Fire Department Heating Unit Installation. As you can see, and Pravud suggests that Mr. Bean has requested that Premium H2O be hired to replace the current heating units and to service them thereafter. Do we have a motion?
This was in the budget. How many units is there going to be? It says 12, two for each unit.
Yeah, and this was all budgeted for, so the money is there. He just wants authorization to allow Premium H2O to do, to complete the installation without going out to bid since they're the company that's going to end up servicing the units.
But does it say how many units there are? I'm trying to read them. The writer doesn't say. I think it's two, isn't it? It doesn't say.
I believe it's two.
So the total cost is 24,000? Yes.
And this is all discussed at the Budget Committee meetings, too?
I would just want to know what the Budget Committee has for money to be spent on that.
This was requested by John. The units are failing now. They don't always work right. In coming up winter, we don't want the pipes freezing or the trucks freezing, and not knowing about it. And they haven't had time to get parts for the old units. So we said, "Yes, go for it. They need it."
Do you remember how much was put in the budget for it, then?
It was around $24,000, I believe.
Yes, and the note from John says that price on the updated quote has not changed from the original quote that he used for budgeting purposes this last April.
That's great. My concern is we still struggle with the Road Commissioner's budget and other budgets. So if we could have prices attached if it's going poorly.
Yeah, where they are in their budget spend. That would be very useful.
This is already in the budget for that...
It's been... I'm just saying it would be nice to have a price on here, not just as was put in the budget. What was the actual price put in the budget?
Okay. Well, we also talked about with even the Road Commissioner that if he has $1 million, and he spent $640,000, then he knows we should have a running tally on any price request so we know where we sit on the budgets.
Because I just tried to remember what we, what was put in by the Budget Committee, and if we need extra money, where's it going to come from?
I think we talked about doing that, didn't we? Having a tally. Christine, how do you think it would take to get that initiated?
What do you mean by a tally?
We talked about this probably six months ago, that the Road Commissioner struggles because he doesn't know how much he's spent based on what he's been allocated from a budget. And we still haven't done that, where he knows if he spent X on Birch Point and this out of his whole budget, what does he have remaining? That should hold true on what the Fire Department has for their budget for the year, what has been spent, and what they have remaining should they have a need, just so we can see where we sit on expenditures.
That information is provided by the Treasurer. I would need to speak with Julie so that she can provide the information in a different way than she currently does. So...
It's just something we talked about in the past.
And I would like to keep us to the Fire Department request for replacing the existing furnace.
Okay, so we'll just add to, maybe on the Fire Department, we can add that, too, so that we can see where we sit on that budget, foster on any other money spent in the town.
So I make a motion that we authorize the Fire Chief to go ahead with...
I say presuming it's two units.
Premium H2O to get the units installed.
Second, is there any further discussion?
Just if there's a discrepancy, what is it? And what we've allocated versus what it's going to cost?
All in favor? This is item number four, the Permit Fee Refund Policy Discussion. And as you will note, it suggests that the Code Enforcement Officer of the Select Board board to consider a reimbursement of a percentage fee if a project is not completed after the building permit fee has been paid.
There are times, and it doesn't happen very often, where somebody will come in and apply for a building permit for a project that they would like to do. And then as they move along with their architect or, you know, their contractor or whoever it might be, they realize that the project either isn't feasible or it's just not something they want to continue to pursue. The case that he brought up to me was one where there was a permit fee that was nearly $3,000, property owner abandoned the project. He conceded that he did have some administrative time into that, you know, visiting the property and going over.
Even sitting on the planning board, I mean, using the, if they come in to meet.
Well, I'm not sure that this one went before the planning board. He didn't talk about that.
But that's a separate fee anyway, the planning board fee.
Right.
But it's.
But he's wondering if perhaps, you know, the board would consider holding back an administrative fee. It could be a percentage of the overall permit fee. Nothing you need to decide tonight necessarily, but he would like to be able to give some of the fee money back to the property owner.
If that, could he come up with some suggestions for what his proposal would be so that we would have it?
I mean, most of these fees are, other than a $3,000 fee, they're not that significant. And it's, I, you know, I look at Harbors and Waterways, $5, zoning map, $5. I look at something, you know, $250 is more or less the application fee, which are planning board revenue fees on here. Those are not, they, I don't think, if someone goes to the planning board, they should pay the fee, whether the projects are or not.
But he's saying building permit fee.
Yeah. And it's just, even if it's just for one applicant who had an unusually large fee, we would need to adopt a policy. So he wanted you to consider it.
So maybe a permit fee where the process never actually gets started.
Yeah.
So with any clearer language, I think.
So something like the town would retain 20% of the fee and John would have the authority to reimburse the rest to the property owner, not the contractor.
Right, I think it needs to be clear though, like they abandoned the project, they never started it. No, I mean halfway through the project and abandoned it.
Well, and if they had trips to the planning board, multiple trips, you know, it's, it depends, you know.
Right, so it's got to be clearer.
You know, because they, they come in for a building permit, they do spend a couple of visits to the planning board before they even probably take out the permit. So it's, I'm not.
Because if it's not clear, it becomes a matter of opinion.
The planning board is a separate fee. I think John's referring to the building permits. Not all building permits go through the planning board process.
Right.
But some do. So I guess we need to figure out what part, you know, if they've had a visit to the planning board, they pay X. I mean, I don't know, we have to, have to think about it, I guess, if that's something like that. My experience.
If John could come up with a proposal, I presume that we would be, we would not refund the cost for the process for the planning board, but that needs to be clear.
It doesn't require action at this point. Mr. Winter.
The town used to have an onsite part-time assessor or assessing agent. The town currently does not. I think the town, the select board would benefit from having an onsite part-time assessing agent. So my question is, why does the town not have a part-time assessing agent?
It was considered after, in the discussion, as the year went by, that we would not have an employee, that we would go to a contract.
That actually is not how Kathy and I felt that went down. We actually felt there was going to be a warm body on some schedule at the town hall. So there, I'm not sure how that misinterpretation happened, but we probably reconsider that specifically where we have significant concerns with the revaluation process of all years, not to have an onsite body. This is not the one to be on.
In particular, I'm not concerned with whether it's an employee or an assessing agent. I would suspect actually for a town, our size, an assessing agent would be better. But is, what would be the select board's reason for not having an assessing agent part-time?
I actually thought we were going to have, as why don't have a reason for that? I think we should have one. I think that was actually discussed at the annual town meeting as such.
I think it needs to be reopened for discussion. We can do that.
I think it's, especially with all that we have going on.
We can put, I would prefer if we could do that in January. I'm fine with that, but I just, I think we need to have the discussion. We keep talking about it, but we don't really talk about it.
And Mr. White? Yeah, I think you should add it to the first meeting in January and really have a good conversation about it. Mr. White, you also had a question about the clawback in this email. Did you want to address that as well?
Sure. A concern I have, which would fall under the responsibility, at least for input, of a part-time assessing agent is, there are a number of programs that provide for deferred property taxes, tree growth, farming, there are a few other categories. What happens is those taxes get deferred and at some point in the future, a sale is made. Those sorts of situations may, or may not continue, but it produces a situation where it is required and it is fair to clawback those deferred taxes. If there is not someone watching it, in particular, I suggest an onsite assessing agent, one may well miss clawing back those taxes that were due the town. In particular, there was an instance in Pittsburgh where clawback was $175,000. That is more than chump change and could well potentially, in smaller instances, pay for the cost of the assessing agent, which otherwise we may never catch. So my concern is, is there any mechanism to affect that clawback in cases that that is applicable?
So with an assessor onsite, I've seen some things missed too, some significant things. Is there another process? Is there a database? Is there? Because I can see it being missed by the way, if it's not somehow.
We had a, didn't we have a situation in this year that a property was sold and the lease was not transferred over, or the purchaser did not file in a timely fashion and had a significant penalty this year at the town?
Yes.
So that's a perfect example.
I can answer that question, but I don't think that would be effective tonight.
No, what I'm saying, it obviously has happened.
I just think with an assessor or not an assessor onsite, we need another way of tracking.
We would be tracking all the sales anyway and it's kept track of it in Trio. We would not miss it.
Or is it?
It's part of, it's part of the property card.
It's not just on the property card?
It is. It's on the section and you can like recall them in Trio, you can bring up all the farmland, all the tree growth.
So has that all been transferred?
Do we have a binder? You know, that's the thing that says we have here's.
We have not, we have not had the authority given to us yet to put the process in place that will allow us to begin the work that we need to do and, you know, hopefully have completed by April 1st. We have a process that the staff is capable of putting into motion.
So that can't be put in motion until the revow is over?
No, she's saying a thought.
It can't, it can't be put into motion until this board says, yes, we trust the staff to handle these pieces.
How about we put that in January's agenda as well?
I just, I would like to say at this time that you've put us in a position, and I understand your reasons for it, but we are now currently in a position where we essentially have three short months until April 1st. We take that date seriously because that's the date of which property is assessed in state aid. We would like to have all of these changes made, the corrections made, and have our process in place, including the detransfers that have been happening over the past few months. I don't feel like a, that we can move forward with that as a staff until I have direction from this board to put a process into motion.
Well, let's talk about developing that in January. We don't have to, we can start the process discussion, we don't have to set it in place, but we, we may keep putting it off.
It needs to be put in place as soon as possible.
We've had, we, we've had the same discussion for several meetings. And again, I completely understand the reasons why, but we're at a standstill in the office for assessing. We cannot process anything. We don't have, we have a process in mind, but we can't put it into motion until this board settles and says, yes, please move forward.
And I don't think I'm ready to do that because I don't feel like we've gotten any answers from this whole revow or from Parker appraisal. So I'm really feeling.
I'm.
I don't have faith that.
I don't have faith. I have so little faith that I actually contacted Stephen Sullivan, who's the deputy director of the main revenue services, and had a conversation with him about it as well. It, I shared our manual with him and I also shared the Pittsburgh one with him and some of my concerns and he's looking into it.
Well, just, I, I want, I want you to hear that when this work does not get done, because you're waiting for something to happen.
That we paid for.
That you may not be able to deliver.
We paid for it.
You may not be able to deliver.
That we shouldn't have paid them in full.
You may not be able to deliver what you are promising the community.
We should not have paid them in full if we didn't get the documentation to know this.
We have the documentation, Suzanne. What I'm trying to say is if this, if the staff at the town office cannot process any of the work we should be processing right now and we remain at a standstill, I am not willing to accept responsibility when things do not get done.
Well, we'll get that in the assessing.
I'm curious what specific steps you intend to have the staff do that is not doing the matter.
I would be happy to provide that, oh, you won't be here on the 21st, but I would be happy to provide that information if the select board would like to wait until the beginning of January. I am not prepared to do that tonight because it's not something on the agenda. I'm the one who came up with the process though. The board does not come up with the process. I recommend a process to them if they either accept or they don't.
But, but you, so.
That's my job.
So you did recommend a process in the, in the form of a contract, Parker appraisal, and there are significant problems with that contract. First of all, it says to create new cost schedules based on local market and you create new land schedules based on sales, of which we need as this board to be able to validate any abatement request. We do not have that.
We have that information in the manual that I printed out for you.
In this manual?
That is all that is required to provide, yes. The Trio schedules are always.
Versus this manual from Pittsburgh that shows all of the information I've been asking for, an evaluation percentage that, this, that is in the first 12 pages is gibberish.
Suzanne.
Yes, Madeline?
You don't need to be raising your voice.
I'm frustrated that our town constituents are not being taken care of properly by this town.
And they will not be if we can't move forward.
Oh, don't blame it on the board, Christine. There's ownership that goes to you on this.
It is out of order for you to interrupt people. It is out of order for you to be yelling.
I'm not yelling. How can you get louder? I'm not yelling.
Keep your voice at a civil tone.
You know, I'm, excuse me. You aren't going to get anywhere until you try to get along. And I'm looking at you specifically. I think there's a problem with your attitude. And if you could be positive, figure out a way to work together and be positive to our staff that we rely on, that maybe things would get done. I think you owe an apology to the people you keep accusing of not doing their job. Every time I come to a meeting, I've heard that we can't go forward because you won't do anything. Why don't you just quit arguing and get going?
I can appreciate your opinion.
Andrew, why don't you, Ms., that lady has stood up for the people of Westbach more than anybody in this room.
Excuse me, you aren't the only one who thinks you know anything and I don't like you yelling at me even.
I'm not yelling.
Oh, yes, you are.
Excuse me.
I'm not going to apologize for representing the town as my staff. I'm sorry you feel that way, but I feel that I've done my duty to the constituents in this town and I am not going to give up until we rectify this problem and properly address the errors in this, in this revaluation process. I'm sorry, that's my standard, I've not changed it yet.
So is there a reason that we can't proceed with this?
We don't have the data necessary.
We can't have the data.
No, we don't.
Excuse me, you did not allow, Miss Wilson.
I'm just curious, you're throwing around the Pittsburgh stuff.
So this is, this is our manual.
I know.
And this is a Pittsburgh. If you look, if you were to look at the Pittsburgh manual, it actually gives you percentages on age, on depreciation, all of these valuations that we use to help make a good judgment based upon the abatement requests that have been presented to us. And we do not have that information and nor does our appeals board have the same information. Should we deny all of these?
For the assessment.
I'm not just being.
Please, it's not the appeals board.
I'm curious though, did you request that information?
I've requested it six times.
No, I'm sorry, in the contract that you made.
Oh, it's in the contract. It states right here, highlighted, that we paid for it and did not get it. Not only did we pay for it, we paid in full and did not receive the full context of the contract, right here.
But, I'm sorry, does it state specifically in the contract?
It does.
All the, no, wait a minute. All the elements that are in the Pittsburgh contract that you're waving around?
It is, it states, it states what I'm requesting, which is the numerical, we should have all of the.
There's disinformation going out.
I'm sorry, I'm not just.
I understand you're not, but this information that you're spewing tonight is disinformation.
Share what the disinformation is, Christine.
The disinformation is that Parker appraisal fulfilled what was required in their contract and they are following state law.
They're not.
What they provided is all that they need to provide for us to move forward.
Let's, let's talk about what, I, I've got copies of the contract, but anyone would like to see what the highlighted concerns I have. There's one for you, would you like one?
No, I don't need one for me, but can, do we need a lawyer? Do we need the town lawyer?
We need to bring a lawyer to it.
I think that'd be terrific, actually.
I would like to move on, Ms. Wilson-Henderson, what is your comment? What is your?
Okay, I'd just add one more thing.
Yes, do you?
I do not, or I would still have a concern with putting on the staff of the town the responsibility to go through and notice if there were any callbacks due. I don't see any way out of doing a good job of that particular thing without someone in detail reviewing every sale, and that seems to me to require a part-time onsite assessing agent.
Noting that you would like to have a part-time agent.
And some reasons why.
So, I mean, so the things that, that our town administrator has mentioned that, that she feels has been fulfilled in the contract, I'm going to share the elements. It says on the, the price includes new property assessments, we received those, physical inspecting each property, we did receive that, measuring and sketching new changes to property cards, we received that, create new cost schedules based on local market, we did not receive that, create new land.
The cost schedule is in that manual.
Please show me the cost schedule.
The cost schedule.
Show it to me. I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you. Please, please stay out of this, Charlie. I'm talking to the town administrator.
This is unbelievable.
It is unbelievable. It really is unbelievable.
Yeah, I'd like to make an honest statement. The people that are in here are the people who are mad. You have a bunch of people in this town that aren't mad, so maybe we should consider that too.
Is everyone in this room satisfied with how the revow process has gone for them?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
So you're, you're the only one. I apologize, but these folks, I think.
But, but my point is that you're, you're implying that everything was done incorrectly or not to your satisfaction.
Not to the contract.
And I'm pointing out either people that are here, other people that are upset, there are a bunch of people that aren't upset. So let's take that into a little bit of consideration.
So let me, let me just go through a couple more items that we're missing in the contract. We, the contract states that we should have had an insurance policy and workers' comp. That's the same process that when we go out for a road bid and an RFP, we require any bidder to have, to submit a bond with the town of Westbach listed on it. We did not, as far as I know, do we have a copy of the insurance policy of Westbach or their workers' comp policy?
They have both, I do not have them either.
I would like a copy of that with a date specified that we were listed on that because I don't believe that existed and, and I hope I'm wrong. But I look at some of the things that are in here and, and one of the pieces that says that these, these folks really aren't licensed appraisers, are you?
They don't need to be licensed appraisers to revow property in the state of Maine. They're required to have at least one certified main assessor on staff.
Do they?
Yes.
Yes, they have two.
They do.
And that you have been told this many times.
Why have I been told that?
Oh, for God's sake.
We're not, the staff isn't even being given an opportunity to make sure that these issues are fixed. If we do not begin to fix, to make corrections, and there are things that need to be fixed. There are abatements that need to be processed, there are questions that taxpayers have that we cannot even follow up on.
We don't have the documentation, nor does the review board have the information necessary to properly review an abatement.
Okay, so what happens if this board never receives the information that you think you're entitled to?
We still don't have the hard copy back required by the state from the assessor, which is supposed to be housed in this town office.
Okay, if, if we do not receive that information, how would you propose that we move forward to start correcting this?
I don't know. Well, Christine, you guys, how do you get us out of it?
I have been trying to get you out of it, you will not let me do it.
The way forward.
We don't have the process here tonight, right?
But you want.
The way.
Well, no, I don't have it written down, it wasn't on the agenda.
The way forward.
But so we just don't talk about things that aren't on the agenda?
Excuse me. The way forward is to handle the current abatements that we have with the best information that we have. And let the process that's been set up by the state take place. That, that is the only rational way to get.
There is not a rational solution. I'm sorry, I disagree with that. This is not a rational solution when we have not been given the cost structure that allow us to validate an abatement that's been submitted, nor do we give these folks the tools to even create the value they believe is. is owed to them as the abatement. They don't have the values to do the simple mathematical formula.
It is not simple?
No, it's not.
And it's not a formula?
It is a formula. It's a mathematical formula, Madeline.
Ms. Wilson Hennessy?
Madam Chair, just as a preface to my point, leadership is what each of us in this town have voted for three of you, not four. I don't live in Bristol. Three of you to demonstrate at that table and in conversations with us one on one. Ex parte would involve two of you, which would be the equivalent of a quorum, speaking amongst yourselves. A conversation with any one of you, with a person who has elected you, is not ex parte. We have no responsibility to take our questions or concerns through the town administrator. She is not the town manager. We live, vote, and pay our taxes in a small community where we can feel collaborative and comfortable. Madam Chair's father, in my father-in-law, Bill Hennessy, was a representative for a very long time to state for this community. Many a time I waited before I drove him where he needed to go as a volunteer. Well, he returned a phone call to every voter that ever asked him a question because he had taken an oath and he did his duty. And it did not matter for Bill Hennessy whether he agreed or disagreed, whether he thought the person was calling with accolades or with concerns. He did his honor and his duty. If you click a thesaurus for leadership, it's governance, it's management, it's guidance, and we look to the three of you. Many of us respect several of the employees within the town hall more, some who are very candid and honest than others. What we are feeling is control. Click a thesaurus. That's to dominate, that's to manipulate, that's to limit and restrain. I see the laughter coming from the fourth person in the
Oh, I am not laughing.
Don't let her interrupt me, please.
I'm not laughing.
Please do not permit the non-elected official to interrupt me. Any elected official or any fellow taxpayer is welcome to interrupt me, but please do not let that interrupt. We are restrained from speaking with our elected officials. If you cannot make a phone call back to me, for people not familiar with me, I'm not a crackpot. For 25 years, I have been an assessor. Longer than that, I have been a federally certified appraiser. Longer than that, I have been a designated broker in the state. I hold state licenses, my business is licensed. I am reviewed and subject to review and discipline from several state bodies. When I speak what I'm about to speak, that this data does not exist, I will quote Title 36 and the appropriate subsection. What I wanted as an agenda item this evening, and I thank you all for the patience with this, but we are in broken town, we are in serious trouble. There have been repeatedly genuine questions. The man who's seated in the front row, that I do not know his name, has asked several times, what is the best vehicle for me to bring forward an opinion of value? Well, I also chaired this town's Board of Assessment Review for 15 years, starting at the end of the last revamp. I have testified at the state level, I have testified at the court level. I am acknowledged in those agreements as an expert witness. You go into the state's assessment manual on page 456, the IAAO, which is a professional organization that I voluntarily am a member of, lists, I believe, the 16 of us in the state assessment manual that it is called JADA, just ask the assessor. And it says, anyone, including any one of you who has new assessing functions, contact us, talk to us, our guidance is solid. That's in the state assessors manual. I enlisted there. Bob Generous is not. 16 of us, and when I've spoken to you and I have given time and I collaborated with your town administrator when you were putting together your RFP and when you were considering a contract, and what you ultimately signed appears to be a document from the 1980s that is so far removed from the RFP, and anything that is done in the contemporary world, and I am not speaking off the cuff, I live and breathe this daily for more than one town, it is so far removed from what your RFP was, it stuns me. So thank you for your patience, and I also chaired the county Board of Assessment Review. I will read what I have asked to have as an agenda item, and I feel it is incredibly important. And Steve, I had two, you've already taken care of the first one, and thank you for that. Effective with the conclusion of the revaluation by final payment on July 1, 2023, in accordance with name Title 36, subsection 330, paragraph 1B, guidelines for professional assessing firms to provide a municipality with payments and information necessary to conduct future revaluations. West Bath must establish a definite, no later than date for delivery by Parker Appraisal for all the work files, included but not limited to the data identified and analyzed to establish the trio cost tables for land and buildings. I will conclude by saying that this Parker Appraisal company manual, and please bear in mind, I have worked with this trio software since it was in DOS. I have gone through this, I have expressed it in select meetings, and been brushed off with what I'm guiding you about. If you go into land schedule 7, here's the number of pages in the front, folks, I'm not counting on maybe 20. Everything in the black clip in the back is regurgitated, meaningless data printed out of your Trio Camma software that has absolutely no relevance. You have zero formulas submitted. You do not even have a list of the sales used. We do not know if Parker Appraisal started January 1, 2021, running through what date. We do not know, because this garbage does not define what is the size of a base lot. Is it one acre anywhere in town? I live where it's three acres of zoning. Is it three acres in my area? Nothing defines the amount of waterfrontage necessary for any of you to decide these abatements. I do agree with Madam Chair that you need to move forward. I agree with this very sincere taxpayer that comes to more of your meetings than I do and who I respect greatly for her heart and her sincerity. But I am going to say, as a professional, we have no data in this town. I am getting contact from certified appraisers saying, Juanita, it is such a mess. I don't know how to do bank appraisal in that town. Can we have coffee? What is going on? We are broken, we are in trouble. You don't have even the basic data, Excel sheets showing coefficient of dispersion is the only way to test the sales data. You have nothing, no proof of that. He has, I believe, pulled this data, I suspect, from Bristol, and dumped it into our data system. This doesn't even describe, to the best of my observation, anything in this town. I respect totally, you've got to move, but Suzanne is abundantly correct with her concern that if you do it, you are doing it based on your local knowledge, which is far, far, far superior to what is in this manual. This is not a manual. There is nothing here that I could possibly, when I chair your Board of Assessment Review, have looked with a straight face. And folks, your last revamp, I missed a family funeral to chair the Board of Assessment Review for you. I could not take more seriously the responsibility of what assessing does to people. Thank you for listening to me and to answer just very simply for Mrs. Weir in front of me. Whereas in violation with what is required under the state statute for Parker Appraisal to remain on that list of reval companies is Title 36, subsection 330, 1B guidelines. And I would be delighted to have Sally here and have that discussed. Delighted. Thank you.
This is my item? Oh, excuse me?
I have a, a personal problem. I have a personal problem that attempts since July to prevent this situation were brushed off. Concerns about the quality were stone cold. I have a concern that don't admit this experience over here, but I have been a full roller. I have been a federally licensed appraiser, and I have done well over, probably close to, close to 2,000 field visits. Not totally inexperienced. I've looked at Trio for 15 years. And when I say to my Board of Assessors that this is not a manual, this is not what you can use, I do not appreciate being told by somebody who has absolutely no assessing real estate background that I am wrong and that I am fat lying.
The town is broken, and it makes me sad to say that. We seem to have significant friction within the town hall. And I'll give you an example that happened to me this past week. I came in to request my copy of the Pittsburgh sample of the manual to see what we should have received. I was told that the town administrator wanted me to pay $25 for this because it was not a West Bath document. Yet I needed that to do you an evaluation, to see what we did not get. So here's my $25. I want to pay that to the town, but I think this is a ridiculous request on behalf of our town administrator to bill me $25 to help me do a better job in our town's assessing. But I'm going to the town.
I was in the town office Friday, did you talk to me about it? Because I didn't come up with that figure.
Oh, no, no, I don't want any money. I'm more than happy to
Please take it, just as satisfying.
I was told $25.
You were told, but you didn't talk to me about it.
Did you come out to see me? You were in the Rat Fronter Office Friday?
You were talking with John, you were talking with Julie. I thought maybe you'd come in the same day.
I actually came in to get this manual, and that's why I was told I had to pay $25.
Not by you.
Directed by you, though. Yeah, no, you and I didn't communicate, but the directions for me to pay the $25. So yes, I appreciate, Ms. Weir, that you're frustrated. I'm frustrated with this. The toxicity in this town needs to stop. But when it's encouraged from the inside out as well, that also needs to stop. Everyone needs to stop. Don't point fingers at any individual sitting at this table. Collectively, we have a problem.
How do you solve it?
I don't know.
I will volunteer if you have the reason. I don't want compensation from this town. If this town needs my volunteer effort and I am abundantly qualified to do it, I will do that because I do care about the people in this town. I have volunteered weekly at this school. I have volunteered an incredible number of hours on all the boards that I have served on. And to answer this, if we can be treated with respect and if the three elected officials in this town communicate with us with respect, we can get you through it.
I think that's great, and I think that's exactly what we need, is for you to volunteer. But I think the method of treating each other goes both ways.
It does.
And I, I kind of think that you've had the floor to lecture us, and let's just be nicer to people and be, jump in and help, not try to be so antagonistic to everybody.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
It's a two-way street.
Yeah, totally.
Leading us the Board of Assessors. There's an application for a group. Do we have a town administrator report? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I don't mind, I need to, Carly, thank you. We have recommendations from the person who did the rebound. We can follow those or we can just stop. Whether or not one assessor agrees with another, case law names, as I understand it, says that the burden of proof of an error in assessment is on the person who is requesting the abatement, that the town is assumed to have had the correct information. I don't see any way forward without making that assumption and allowing people to make their own decisions about what they will do as a result of our decision. So in the case of the request from Ann Ireland, the recommendation is found on the back page of the first sheet. The recommendation is an abatement of $2,040. And he, on the second full page, makes the corrections for his original valuation. And the change is on account of the the land was not assessed as agricultural farmland. And the change in the And the change in the new tax is based on farmland.
I actually have a question. I haven't heard back. I don't know if you can... And I know we don't want to keep postponing this, perhaps till next week. Well, the reduction in value of farmland is allowed and honored in the state. The one question I have about having a waterfront parcel in farmland is that they have amenity to the access of the waterfront, which they have not given up in that value of farmland. So I don't know if there's... And I need to clarify that before I make a statement one way or the other. But having farmland is totally legal, but you have not lost the right to access your waterfront as amenity to that parcel. And so I don't know if there's a different value that should be included in that because we don't have the waterfront values in this table that we're supposed to have. But I believe that there should be a value associated with accessibility to the waterfront, even though you have farmland on it. So I move that we table this particular one until I get further discussion on that. I want to do what's right on behalf of the community.
Is there a second?
We have a question.
This is...
Do we have the answers to the questions that we filled out two meetings ago that was collected?
No.
We don't have any answers to those questions.
The questions that we submitted to Parker, were they ever addressed?
No. Parker Appraisal will not do anything additional until they receive direction from the full board of how we're going to start moving forward.
But I thought when the full board submitted questions, was that not from the full board?
We submitted the questions...
As a board?
As a board. Because the board requested that I send the questions to Parker. They did not answer those questions.
But we submitted it as a board, and that just contradicted your statement.
No, I was talking about how we move forward. They really, they wanted, they want to know the program moving forward. They want to know if they're going to be evolved. And it feels like nobody can communicate or have any clear answer to any clarity about how we're moving forward. So we are, when I say we're at a standstill, we are truly at a standstill.
But answering some of those questions may have helped us with this.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. One of the main issues about what you're talking about.
Bob's concern, as I understood it, I had one conversation with him. He said that he was expecting questions that had to do specifically with value. He felt that the questions, most of the questions that were sent over from the board were more personal and antagonistic.
I can read the questions that I sent over. Please share all comments used by Westbah neighborhoods on how you determine valuation changes. How is that confrontational?
I cannot speak for him, Suzanne.
But I, so I'm just saying that the questions that I submitted that were generic in nature, which was required, what formulas were used to determine your analysis? Does that seem confrontational to you?
This is why I'm struggling.
How is a waterfront valuation determined? How are the subdivisions in neighborhoods organized, valued, including open space and amenities? How are the property cards amended in Trio and Mark Copy? What was done to review input for accuracy? How do we ensure all property cards are accurate to be used in the valuation process path forward? There's nothing here that I feel is contradiction. I don't understand how a contract with an individual who said that he wanted the full board to submit questions, of which I did, in the timeline that was specified, are now ignored. I have a problem with that. I just, I can't, I can't fathom that a company took $150,000 from Westbah and has just not completed it, and yet we paid them in full, which I also have a problem with, and we have not received all of what we were supposed to get out of that contract. That is a significant problem, and that's why I'm so frustrated that we have paid for this, and it makes me ill that we're not representing the town. I am so frustrated.
I suggest you get a lawyer in.
Absolutely.
Not the only way, even a person, something like this. I could do eventually afternoon. It's not going anywhere, so get a lawyer.
We should.
Give him a deadline. Give him a deadline.
We did. We, I was told to get this in on Monday. I created this document when I was in Phoenix at 4:00 in the morning on the strip.
Excuse me. There was a motion on the floor. Is there a second to table this? I don't want to make a motion that we approve this because with the letter of Ron Beal in here, it makes perfect sense to me. This has been common since...
I agree with the portion of this being approved. I really do. I think if it falls within the farm category, I just don't know if there's a percentage of this because they have access to the water. They have not diminished their accessibility to use of the waterfront, that there shouldn't be a value associated with it. I actually pulled their property card today, and there is zero waterfront now allocated to this parcel, but they still have full use of it. So I'm torn between, here's the property card. I'm torn between what they're requesting and what we should be granting because I don't, I think there should be a value associated with use of the waterfront, even though it's not a farm. They still can enjoy the waterfront.
But they're not, it's a farm.
But, but they still can walk through the farm and access the water.
But then there'd be no sense to turn it over to the county.
It's hay, they're hay.
I'm going to second your opinion, Captain. That the tax be abated as recommended. Is there further discussion?
I think that we should get clarification. I'll still pursue it one way or the other. We'll figure out what the answer is.
All in favor of granting the abatement? Sweet target, you're sitting through that one. The next question is concerns with property of Lloyd and Robin Johnson.
Are they present?
The recommendation is that the abatement be denied. And you can see that, you can see on the schedule that they provide.
So I'm actually going to move that we approve this abatement in the mere fact that we've not been given the values to even, to look at this in review. And I don't think it's fair to hold you accountable in your process, and we haven't given you or me the tools to determine this. So I move that we approve your abatement based upon the information that you have not been given. And I'd like to move forward with the town. And so I move that we approve the abatement on behalf of the Johnson family.
What is the request of abatement?
It is, let's see. There are two values here. There's two pieces. I've got stuff that's stapled together that are not, I've got the Nelson file and the Lloyd file.
The thing is, we don't, I don't know how title property is assessed. We have nothing to go by, just looking at everybody else's property.
Give me one second. I've got two different abatements stapled in the same package. Hold that thought. I have the Nelson family on that. So what was your full abatement? They didn't ask for an amount. They don't know what amount to put on there, I guess.
We don't know what. Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't...
You know, we requested $100,000 being read. Because when we interviewed with the guy there that had that company, that's what he told us he was going to do. He had us as deep waterfrontage. We're not deep waterfrontage. He said he would look at it again, and if we were title waterfrontage, he would reduce the value 75 to $100,000.
On the land, not the structure?
On the land. That's all we requested.
So right now, it says the land is valued at $468,500. You're asking for that to be reduced to $368,500?
Yeah.
That's $100,000.
$100,000 should be reduced from the land. At least that.
Well, they said 70 to 100.
75 to $100,000. He said he would reduce it after he reexamined it. Well, he changed the evaluation. He took us off the deep waterfrontage and put us on title waterfrontage, but he didn't reduce the value.
They didn't change anything. They just changed the wording.
I'm just wondering if that company is accountable to anybody. They're supposedly licensed above the state, aren't they?
That I haven't been able to verify, but let's, let's...
But we have been getting run around for months.
I understand that. So are you comfortable if we meet in the middle? It's 70 to 100. It was the range. Are you comfortable at 85? On the land value? Because we, I don't have, you didn't put a value on here.
We couldn't put a value on it.
I understand that because we didn't know anything. Right, right.
They don't have any formula for figuring the value.
Do you really want to hear from me? I'm concerned that anytime I speak now that... I do have something to offer on this. I'm concerned, and I don't know what the ramifications are. But I'm concerned that if we start doing arbitrary abatement amounts, that the tax, the values are going to become inequitable. I don't know how that works. It's just something that's in my mind that if we come up, if the board comes up with arbitrary figures, I don't know what that means.
Right. It means that we, the town is no longer...
But this is, but these are the figures I've been asking for all along. So I, again, I'll go back to, if we had the value of deep water to title, that we could make the adjustment ourselves out of the manual that's supposed to have that information, we could confidently make a judgment tonight. But we don't have the tool to do that.
So if we deny this and it goes to, I'm just asking everybody...
They don't have the book either. That's how...
No, I know that.
Is Parker part of that?
Parker Appraisal is part of the Board of Assessment Review process, yes.
And then, I'm just playing this off in my head. Then you would have the opportunity to confront him and say, this is what you promised us. What happened?
So we want the formula.
Right, I understand that.
That's what we want.
But...
We can't communicate with him, and Christine said she would find out if he lied to us or if he just made a mistake.
But we need the formula. But we may not get the formula for a while. So I'm just wondering if you would want your time in front of him and the board.
I have to ask a question. They did not put an abatement request amount, a value. Hold on, just hold that thought. Can they amend this application to include a value?
That's not their application. That's Parker Appraisal's response.
Where's your, where's their application?
In that packet.
See, well, I don't have it in mine, so I'm not sure. Oh, here it is. 468,274.
The way forward is to continually decline. Then the, then the Johnsons can go to appeal. Mr. Jengus will answer that. It's not, there's no expense involved. Mr. Jengus is then required to answer for his assessment. The Board of Assessment Review, like a jury, very like a jury, will be instructed as the law and, and all of the things that went into this decision. And then the Board of Assessment Review gives their answer. They'll either uphold this or deny it, depending on what they determine as a result of your information and as a result of his information.
So I have clarification.
Excuse me.
I thought you were finished.
We have a question from the panel.
We have been coming here since July with these problems. We haven't had the information, the formula. All we were asking was, how do they figure? How do they assess the land, the waterfrontage? I have looked up all the properties in Westbah and their waterfrontage. Some of them are not charged anything. Some of them are charged deep water, like we are. And we're not deep water. We're clam flats. We're clam flats. If we didn't have a dock out there, I wouldn't be on the water two hours a day. We can't have a motorboat in there. We can slide a kayak in at high tide. That's it. And we're getting tax assessed for deep water. It's not right. There's, and all that, when I ask, all they're telling us is the house next door and the house next door. Well, they're not complaining. Well, they should be complaining. This town is ragged on of something that they shouldn't be paying.
So I did, I found your request in here. The year that you have...
I've got more stuff.
No, but I, because I didn't see a value on the abatement here. You have, you have a land, in 2022, you had a land value at $263,800.
Right.
And a building value of $130,242. And then your land went to $268,500, which is at first acre deep water land value, and a building of $274,700. So you're challenging only the land, is that correct?
Yes, the land.
I move that we take their, we honor their $262,800 land value, which was what next year's value was, and give them, and they maintain the same building value of $274,000. I move that we approve that abatement based upon their contributing information, and they have not been given the information otherwise to determine it one way or the other. And the town has done a disservice to them.
I really, I can't. I would really like to hear from Sally before we do that. Because if we start this where I think we're going down a slippery slope, I'd really like the attorneys and what Austin needs without co-annually as well.
We don't have the data, and we keep prolonging them. And the problem is, they don't have, the next, the Board of Appeals doesn't have the data either. So they're going to be pulling out of the same rabbit that I had.
I think, and I don't know if we can do this either. It's, we need to make sure, as we're trying to figure this out, that there's no interest or anything attached.
There is interest being calculated. The town's going to have to abate that as well.
I'm just saying, even if we deny this, they shouldn't be charged any way.
They should not be charged any tax.
Interest or anything on these because we're holding them up.
Holding them up.
Do we have to pay our taxes to even apply for a visa? We had to pay our taxes to even apply for a visa. We were like part of the town rules.
Yeah, and the state law requires that taxes be...
You already have the money. That's the big one.
But you're trying to get some back.
I'm trying to get some back.
That's why they...
Pretty much trying to knock you out.
Okay, good. So I move that we, that we, we don't, we table this until we speak to Sally. I know. There's no value on, there's no... I understand, I don't, I completely understand. I'm trying to do what's right, and I don't want to do it.
And I don't think that there's any question that any of us up here is like, I'm trying to do what's right. Yes, David? is willing to try to do what's right.
Going forward, the board certainly needs to have somebody here in-house to explain the taxpayers. For this one day a week or three days a month, have a set schedule.
Hundred percent.
Have a set schedule where they can make appointments and come in and discuss this once we get the, the facts. But there's no way a taxpayer should have to go through and wait. So, we need to get somebody in-house, one day a week, two days a week, maybe three days to make through this mess. If you can find that certified person to do this. I think that's the first thing the board should do.
Hundred percent.
Is to find out who we can get to do this and start that process so we can get past this revale and everybody being taxed the same way. Because right now, we're not doing anything.
We aren't, I don't know how to fix that. I really don't.
You do need the mathematical formulas and data that Jengus used to develop these values. You can't hire anyone to help you until he provides the information that he was allocated to under Title 36, subsection 330. And I know I'm being very forceful in what I'm saying, but it's primatically realistic. You need his data. It may not be pretty. It may be a mess, but it needs to be in your hands. You need the math. And the math has to have been significant over the course of two years. You need a list of sales. Your attorney will not disagree with that.
And going forward, we need to start someplace with all the numbers and facts to move past this. There's no, no way around it. At this point in time, we've got to start somewhere at the beginning of this process and know how this was done, how we were assessed, and be able to justify that.
How do we get that? Because I just feel like-
Well, we have to ask the assessor to do this.
Can a lawyer, can a lawyer-
He's set deadline and-
Give him another.
No, can a, can a lawyer go to him and demand it?
But time is of the essence. We, the promise is, we, the clam is ticking until February 28th, when we have to finalize these abatements. That's our six-month deadline.
I get, I get that, but I mean-
But if he doesn't, we have two months to do this.
Right. Well, we're not getting the answer of how to get it out of him.
Maybe we honor Juanita's volunteer. I mean, there's, that, you know, could be-
I, I would volunteer to do any mechanical process, but I am not the wizard behind the curtain. Without the math that this man, we compensated him for, he must present his math. I can understand his math, Mike could, you folks at the table could. But you've got to have the math.
The values.
You've got to have the formulas. You've got to have the coefficients of the spurt. You need, I gave you samples of it and emails to you. Look at that. You're ignoring the 15% upper and lower tails and taking the 70% core. He's got to have done that for every type, for mud flats, for deep water. Then you can carry it. But you must have his math.
Is Sally aware of this?
No, no. And only because the board hasn't directed me at to-
Please call her tomorrow. It's like, I move that Christine will call Sally tomorrow.
What would you like me to ask her for, just so I'm clear?
We want a clarification of, of the, the failure to meet the contract. What is our rights to force him to do so? And if he does not, what do we do to proceed in this process? Any other input, agreed, denied, yes, no? Because she's looking at me.
It sounded like we really need the formulas. We need those.
What we need to do is-
So, so it sounds like per the state, there is a statute in the state of what he has to provide.
Yes.
Do you want to ask the attorney whether he has met-
He has not met.
His standard to provide the, the information that the state requires him to provide, guys? That's a true rule for it.
Because there's-
Yes, I agree with your state.
Right, is that what I asked?
Title 36, subsection 330, paragraph 1A. And I will give a copy of that to Carly so she has it in the morning.
I actually think I have it.
And just to be clear, this question in various forms and various levels of articulation has been presented to him. He has continually not complied with it, which makes us-